So, okay, I think we're good. Uh, call the order. And roll call.
Yep. Uh, your side?
Here.
Blue.
Here.
Uh, high ones. Uh, me?
Here.
Smith?
Swanson?
Here.
And Wigan?
Here.
Uh, we need approval of minutes for the sub-.
On November twenty twenty-four maybe, is there a motion?
So moved.
Exactly.
Motion, uh, by Blue, second by, uh, Legan? Okay. Uh, your side?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And new business, ZBA twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine, design review for approval of a fifty-six hundred square foot storage building located at fifty-three thirteen Ross Lane. Property owner Forest City Gear. And if somebody here comes up that? Gentlemen like to go forward and tell us about the project? If you would, give us your names. And then we'll square you in from two to the end.
All right, uh, Jared Lightford, Forest City Gear, uh, Director of Operations.
My name's Dwight Bond, I'm with Morton Buildings. Good to be back.
Now, gentlemen, you've all swear to tell the whole truth and not be but the truth.
Yes.
Percy, go ahead, tell us.
So, we're, uh, building this, we want to build this, we're a storage building, because as the manufacturing facility is accumulating, we're, we're accumulating equipment, we're running out of fixed spaces in the building, so storage of raw material, work in progress and finished goods, uh, to put it into a climate controlled off storage building, um, that's what we're trying to do, so we worked with Morton to design the building, uh, and then Art Design has worked with us for the site plan and the review and, and the particular bills incorporated with that. So there will be no employees resident in the building. It'll just be people accessing the building to find material and product.
Yeah, what do you think, Tom? Can you do that?
Yeah, I can do, uh, I can do kind of a, just a little brief overview. So, yeah, um, like Jared said, this is gonna be mostly for the storage of equipment and that was part of the land use kind of challenge of this site was it was named a warehouse, but was it really gonna fall under the warehouse use in the zoning code? Because the warehouse use has more to do with kind of distribution and storage of goods where this would be storage of equipment. So once we were able to define it a little bit under that, instead, we were able to put it under a, a light industrial use that made it permitted rather than prohibited on the site. Uh, so that helped, uh, the applicant is anticipating combining the parcels along with the main manufacturing facility across the parking lot. The proposed building meets a vast majority of the bulk requirements for the light industrial district. Uh, village staff had met with the applicant and discussed a ten-foot setback on the southeast or southwest lot line, uh, adjacent to the property owner to the southwest. So that was kind of agreed upon by village staff and the applicant. It meets all the off-street parking requirements. There was kind of a snag about a landscaping plan, the applicant provided one in the layout plan for the site. Um, however, this doesn't meet the uh, building foundation or the transition area landscape sections of the code under, I think it's six-five-seven and six-sixty in the landscape section. And as the zoning administrator, I have the ability to reduce the la- the landscape liability of the project, but only by twenty-five percent. And the building foundation section of the code stipulates that they need eighty percent of the facade of the building covered. Now that's something that the ZBA could, um, be a little bit more lenient on and kind of wave through or, um, require the applicant, as noted in the conditions of the memo, to provide that building foundation landscaping. Um, and then for the transition area, that's more as a protection for adjacent property owners to provide additional screening. Now, this is a heavily wooded site and it's kind of tucked back in back into, uh, Ross Lane and kind of into the Forest City Gear complex. So I was kind of discussing with Joe earlier maybe having them provide this landscape plan, but need no additional landscaping, just kind of more of an inventory of what's out there to make sure that all the bases are covered and the standards are met. And just based on some of the Google Earth or Google Maps Street View sections I've seen, I, I don't, I'm, I'm pretty confident that they would meet that transition area standard. Um, but again, as a condition of the report, it's just in there that they have that landscape plan inventory kind of provided so that we're covering our bases there. Um, other than that, uh, staff feels that this is great use and a great development of the site and we, uh, recommend approval with conditions.
And then just really briefly, I think, oh, this is, I mean, Jerry knows this property. I'm just looked at those maps. That's where some of this whole issue came in with, is that you, you can explain too, I guess, there's multiple pins, multiple parcels on this back area, so most of those property, the Forest City Gear property and their whole campus back there, uh, maybe six or seven different parcels?
I think there's six in total.
Yeah.
Out there and they're all under a different LLC, two of them are in the same LLC for ownership, they're all owned by the same family. Um, the one, and Evan spoke to it, the parcel that this building is going to go on and the main plant, the main Forest City plant are held by the same LLC, so the intentions are gonna be to combine those two parcels. So.
And so that's really, and so you hear how confusing it is, for, we think we just simple a building on there, however, it's just because there's so many parcels trying to, we obviously why we buy with our own ordinances here and we're trying to do that, it's just been sort of difficult to sort of finesse it because of that, and so that's why one of the conditions is noting that it's gonna combine those parcels together, um, which will help with some of the setback issues that have state landscaping, um, and requirements too, but obviously, that just sort of explains why it's a little more than just a simple building, like, it should be very easy, but it's got a little twist to it, but I think Evan and everybody had worked together to make it through that, to work through those problems. But those have problems, but those issues.
So Evan, you mentioned that as administrator, you have a leeway of twenty, twenty percent of the hundred percent landscaping.
Right, for that? Sorry, go ahead.
Twenty, twenty-five percent.
Correct, for the entire site, the site project area, I have the ability to kind of reduce that liability by about twenty-five percent now. That's for not only the building foundation landscaping and the transition area on that lot line, but also in the landscape ordinance, there's perimeter parking lot and interior parking lot. Now, we took those out basically because there's, the parking area provided really doesn't have an interior and it doesn't really have a perimeter, it's um, eight spaces in front of the building for kind of the day-to-day operations of the storage or day-to-day operations of Forest City Gear. Um, so we didn't really see a need to, uh, apply the landscape standards from those sections to that. So if we're applying it to the percentages from the transition area and the building foundations, yeah. Um, that eighty percent of the building foundation's really kind of the one that is gonna put a dent in that, or is gonna take up that whole twenty-five percent. So that's why there are conditions in the report to have them provide either more landscaping around the building foundation and then that kind of little bit more of an inventory in that transition area.
So you're still in support of the, um, the condition of the landscape plan?
Correct.
Of the two condition that you, you put down?
Correct.
Okay. Were questions? Advocate, or Evan? Dean, you're looking hard over there.
Uh, I'm just. So there wasn't a landscaping plan submitted because we, you feel like what's, there is adequate, you're saying?
Well, there was, initially, there was not one submitted. Uh, and then we reached out to the applicant, the applicant provided one on the layout plan of the site, they added note, the landscaping notes uh, on the west side of the building and then a, a planned schedule on there as well. Um, looking through the village's ordinances on a submittal requirement, I believe that meets it. However, the plan provided isn't compliant with the actual rules and regulations and standards in the landscape section.
Any further from board? Hey, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion? Is ready to vote?
Yeah, on, outside of the, the properties and the LLC, that cleared up part of the questions, I am.
Your families, actually. Yeah, yeah. All right. We get a motion to approve? Uh, including the, uh, conditions one and two?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by me, second by Blue. Um, Blue?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Swanson?
Abstain.
Wigan?
Yes.
And your side?
Yes.
That's all, before we jump to you, it's my, all the, I mean, upper mid-stable, you know, the, uh, time. Thank you.
Two on the agenda, ZBA twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero, design review for approval of a hundred and sixty square foot accessory storage structure located at forty-seven sixty-seven Boost Down Road. Be here for that? Yeah, please come forward. It's your name and what's where you're in real quick.
I'm John Beaman, I'm representing Tony Pipitone.
It's like John.
John Beaman.
And John, you swear to tell the whole truth and not be but the truth.
Yes.
Go ahead and tell us what you got.
So we got the emerald roof shed that's ten feet wide and sixteen feet long. It's gonna be built on like ten-inch piers that are forty-two inches deep. There's four of them, um, for, for each box. The, the thing's gonna sit on, there's sixteen piers and it's gonna sit on four running boards that are four by six. Uh, there's a loft. So the total height is gonna be fourteen feet. The sheathing is gonna be like furring strips and then it's got the steel, uh, ribbed, ribbed steel siding, the whole thing's steel on the outside, including the roof. And it's, it's, um, I don't know, what else, uh, do you guys want me to scrap on?
Well, that, that's good, if we're questioning, okay. Or by Evan, was there something to add?
Sure, uh, this was kind of indicate, this is taken up by the ZBA since it's a non-residential storage structure. So since it's on a commercial piece of property, it has to come here. Uh, Mr. Pipitone had come, uh, with the permit last month uh, asking basically just as a place to store uh, equipment like a lawnmower and kind of maintenance adjacent equipment for the commercial center there, um. But it's gonna be situated between the existing dumpster enclosure and the parking lot. Uh, so probably provide some separation between those two. A hundred and sixty square feet, um, like mentioned. Uh, meets all the bulk requirements of the district. And, um, the only two conditions are that the siding, the color of the siding should match the uh, color of the principal building to the greatest extent possible. And then no curb cut, curb cut in front of the accessory storage building would be allowed, just to make sure that it's not gonna be storing any smaller vehicles or anything and that it's just mostly used for maintenance equipment. So based on that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Questions for the applicant?
Anyone? Plans meeting issues on this one? That's a, in the commercial, yes, commercial district, it's in such a building, it's very similar to, it's just a sort of storage shed, it's just because it is in front of that, um, private commercial property. Asking, I mean, Mary Target was weak circle or come on, like I said, I think it has to come through this floor just to make sure we don't have that's just thrown up in commercial areas that normally be essential, but I think I'm slicked at that, it's just, meet all our standards for application.
That does bring up a question, um, it would look like this in Washington, what would change? Is there another spot on the property? More time to throw that maybe? Just consider, if not chosen, or is this just the best? It would quite a fine spot, but I'm just wondering out of the way more. Because here we don't know. Did you, did you guys consider another spot on the property or is that?
Not that I'm aware of.
The only spot of it.
That was the only spot that he talked to me about, was that?
Are you the builder of the, the building?
Yeah.
I think part of it, he was who was next to the dumpster enclosure, I think that's probably I mean, I don't know, I think that's probably even the reason still why they changed that spot there, just for the storage of snowmowers essentially and factors that were, uh, hold the property.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
For discussion? I don't like hearing a motion overboard. That, we shouldn't have brought that up, that's, it'll summer off. All right, uh, we need a motion to approve. And with the two conditions, there were two conditions.
Color and yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve with the two conditions as outlined in the the, uh, report.
That's second.
Uh, motion by Blue, second by Swanson? You?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes.
And your side?
Yes.
Yes.
Good job. Thank you. Foreigner agenda, ZBA twenty twenty-four dash zero one one of a hearing for various requests to waive the requirement for installation of a fence surrounding brown mounted solar panels located at one-one-three eight zero Main Street. And somebody here to? Could we get your names?
Michael Miller.
Okay.
You're the property owner.
All right.
Zach Nos, head of operations at State Line Solar. So, so.
I'm Brian Black, I'm just the property owner just to the south of Mike's property.
Okay. And gentlemen, you all swear to tell the whole truth and not be but the truth.
See.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, uh, quite some time ago, I looked into getting solar, obviously because of the rising cost of energy and um, I've reached out to a couple different solar companies and landed with State Line for a number of different reasons, came with a a lot of different recommendations from two different people I know. And being lower cost, but, um, shortly realized that I could not do, um, roof mount. Um, if you see some of the pictures, you'll see I'm in a very heavily wooded lot. Um, and my roof was not large enough. Um, I probably would have had to take at least six trees down that surround my house. Uh, very old oak trees. Which I did not want to do. And, and with the size of the roof not being big enough, it just wasn't really an option. Um, so we kind of went down the path of, of a ground mount. And I really, looking at some of the pictures you might see, that I kind of had one spot available to put a ground mount where I got the full sun. Um, and that's kind of where we landed. Um, after a lot of discussions with, uh, State Line. And then we kind of started looking into some of the county ordinances and then the Rosco ordinances. Um, the one hiccup was the fence. Um, and then after kind of some, some discussions with Evan and, and Joe, I think we had, I don't know, two or three discussions and a lot of emails with Evan. Um, uh, it was decided that we just kind of would need to put in a variance and, and kind of leave it up to leave it up to the board what, what was decided. Um, and then I, I, I kind of did a little more research and saw that you guys were even talking about it in the, on the last, at, at the last meeting. Um, so, and I know there's, it's, you know, this is kind of exploding recently because some of the, uh, some of the incentives are going away at the end of the year and that's kind of my push is that a lot of the incentives are gonna be going away if I don't get this installed by the end of the year and up and running, so that's why we're here in front of you.
How many panels are you talking about? Six?
Twenty-six, so five, about five hundred square feet. Twenty-eight, sorry.
This fifteen, what? Height, come up, what, how was that?
Fifty long, height would only be about approximately thirteen to fourteen feet. The length of the system would be about fifty-two and a half feet and the width of the system would be approximately about eleven feet wide. And be on a, pretty much a umbrella-like racking system with a pole in the center of the system and tilted at thirty-degree. From the system would be approximately about a foot off the ground.
So the height's because of the trees?
Um, height is for the trees and then the pitch of the system, you want the ideal pitch, um, it's pretty much wherever the sun is, which on the equator, you, you want flat system and then with us, with the sun where it goes, you want about thirty-degree angle for best production of the solar.
So we fifteen feet tall, you said?
Approximately about thirteen feet.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Evan? I'll bring it to the back again.
What was that?
Individual one?
Yes.
Uh, they're about forty-five inches by ninety inches. Each, and there are two rows.
Evan, did you have more to add?
Yeah, when I went through this staff report, um, basically this had come in, uh, with Mr. Miller coming to see if he could get this as a extra, accessory structure zoning permit. Um, and the way that the ordinance is written today, the, um, the applicant or the, the property owner has to provide a fence on the property line most adjacent to the solar panel and then the height of the solar panel, the maximum height is determined uh, one foot less than that fence. Well, the maximum height of a fence in the village is six feet, effectively making the maximum height for any solar five feet. Um, and obviously based on, um, what Mr. Miller say, that won't work for the system that he's planning to put in. So he's looking for a variance to say um, to wa- to basically waive the fence requirement, so then that height requirement is null and kind of void. So the staff report that I had written goes through a little bit of theory on variances in zoning and they're more they're supposed to be more, uh, again, something that's restrictive rather than permissive and the justification that was given uh, and the application was more so that because the land is so wooded and secluded and that the the lot size was so large, that a fence requirement wasn't necessary. Um, and as I stated before, variances are more about how properties can be um, more restrictive and how property owners can because of um, unique circumstances with the physical surroundings, um, the size of their property or the layout of their property can, um, have some standards waived or varied from. Um, and again, that's usually when properties are smaller and not larger or they're configured in a way that makes setbacks harder to meet. Um, so applying a variance for something that's more permissive, like a larger lot, isn't, um, isn't the case usually, it would um, be the exception for sure for variances that I've seen and are common. Um, but that's not to say that they've never happened. So the findings of fact that I've added to the staff report that, um, that A through E list, A is really the one that's being kind of tested here. And that reads, because of the particular surroundings, shape or topographical conditions of a specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere convenience if the strict letter of the regulations to be, were to be carried out. So it's kind of up to the board to say does Mr. Miller's application and justification meet that standard? Um, I, as the zoning administrator and with how variances are interpreted in the case law, I have to say that I recommend denial, but ultimately, again, it really stops with the ZBA and, uh, it's, it's really your decision to justify. So with that, I recommend denial, but pass it over to you.
So I have, I have something to add to that for justification of it, in that, um, I live at the property just to the south of him and
I just, sorry, can you say your name, just?
Uh, Brian Black.
Just because we're recording.
Actually, I rent, I rent out the property, but, um, I also talked to the the tenant I have there and he's also in support of not having a fence. Uh, the fence, the wooden fence just to the south of my property is adjacent to the funeral home there and it's all in disrepair and starting to fall down and lean and everything. Which is to me, you know, oh, I'm not happy with that. And, um, when I sit in the back of my property and look out, his solar panel would be way at the back between his house and the pool back in that area. And really is not in my eyes, you know, it's not an eyesore to me, I would rather look at that than have a fence be put in that area that's possibly gonna fall down in the future. So I don't really think there's a need for a fence, I can understand the ruling that there might be a need for a fence in some locations where if I had a pole in my driveway and solar panel was right there to look at every time I got out of my car, right next to my garage, behind my house. But my lot is long and narrow and also wooded back there in the back. And where that would be, I can't see it being a problem to have, you know, I don't see a point of having fence in that location in this case.
Way, and the way everything's written, it might, and from what I understood from, from Evan, that the fence only needs to be where the solar panel is. So it only need to be about sixty-five feet long and anybody from the road or even, uh, Mr. Black's house would be able to see it. You can see that from the pictures, that's not gonna block anything. Not gonna be, that's the whole point of the fence is, is to block view. In, in this particular case, you're not gonna block anything with the fence, it's just gonna be a divide between the very back portion of the property and the solar panel, so what's the point of the fence in this case? And I can understand a, a, a fence in a, in a neighborhood or, or a s- a situation like that. But i- in this case, and that's kind of why we were asking for the variance. It's just, there's no point to this fence, it's just limiting what I can do in this case. There's no point to this fence, it's just limiting what I can do in this case. Cause the opposite of the houses, you know, we're, I'm way up here and he's way back there, so. Makes sense. And really it could just kill the whole deal if, if I, if I, might not be able to do it at all. And I don't think, I don't know if we have an option to, option B.
Um, so the fence is not a monetary issue, it's a sightline to the sun issue for the panels?
For the panels themselves, not as much, uh, for how far away they are for this property, that's where he's saying that he's gonna put them on the edge of his property and you're no matter where you look, you're still gonna see unless he surrounds his entire property and there's still depending on where you're at with how far the yards are apart, you could still see it from farther away. But with the fence from the funeral home on one side, you're there, you shouldn't be able to see it just cause of that fence. So, it's, it's, that's what he says, but the fence really wanna do what you're thinking where if you're in close quarters and you're all real, you're only going fifteen feet away from the fence most times, so you won't be able to see it. This way here, it could be hundreds of feet away from it most of the time, you're gonna see right over it, no matter where.
The other issue with the fence too is that, that also limits the height, the maximum height of the solar fence.
Yeah.
That's where I think, I think that's the bigger issue.
That's the bigger issue, it's limiting, limiting.
Aller. Be foot shorter, the fence has to be a foot taller than the solar fence.
So the way, the way the code's written now, the maximum height can be five feet.
Five feet and doesn't work on this.
More than five feet.
That's, yes, so that's really what the discussion.
And, and the problem is in the code that's written now, isn't it? I mean, as far as
Correct.
What's stopping him from being able to do it? Um. Yeah, was it Article Eight, Evan, where they talks about solar and it was amended or something? Do you know when it was amended last?
It was amended in twenty twenty-one. Um, let me look here. Yeah, it was amended in twenty twenty-one.
That's pretty damn new, is that still there?
Yeah, and it was, it's section one five, 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 and then ground bound systems are subsection two. And then, yeah, that's B, that's fencing, so any yard containing a ground mount solar energy production system shall provide a fence along adjacent properties. The fence shall comply with Article Six of this chapter, which is the fencing standard. Um, and that's what makes it, that's what gives it that six-foot max height. For a fence.
So really, unless it's flush to the ground, which probably isn't possible, right?
Safety issue at that point with snow and animals and all that, that, but also in production, physically with the trees and everything, I guess it's already a little rough.
So the standard is meant to stop large panels over height, um, in somebody's residential yard. And this is doing just that. By a lot. This is a tough one from you guys, let's have some talk here about this.
I, I, when I was looking at this, the variance, I was like, you know, since it's like a case by case and looking at this case, I could see where you definitely needed variance, but to me, there's an issue with the code and I'm afraid we just go along with the variance. You know, you're gonna, we're gonna continue to have this problem unless the coach.
Agreed, um, but solar panels aren't meant to be everywhere. Everything doesn't have to change so that solar panels can be put in. There may not be anything wrong with the code, it doesn't work in this particular case.
I'm looking through, I don't see what this thing looks like, it's fifteen feet high, I don't, I don't, I don't see any, any to show what it looks like.
I don't think we've got the picture of it.
Can you show me a picture? There you go.
Oh, they're looking at that, how far away is it from the road?
I mean, I have the permit, I thought it was on the, it's two hundred, three hundred feet away, hundred eighty-one feet.
Two hundred eighty-one, they have only three hundred feet from the road.
So it's probably like two hundred feet from my house.
Is this still a lease or a purchase?
Purchase.
Joe, were all the neighbors noticed for this? Right, that's what you said. Kurt Schwager, he just, he just joined us a little late, he's, he's on the north side of.
Uh, can we get your name, please?
Uh, Kurt Schwager.
Okay, and Kurt, you swore to tell the whole term from another book, sure?
I do.
Okay, please tell us your version here.
Uh, I got no problem with it because I, it would be out of my view completely. It's not even in my view. Would that ever be, I got a structure that blocks my property to this. And when I look outside, I see my structure, I don't, I wouldn't even see it. Ever even though we had. Not brought to me at all.
So it's hard for me to see on here, how visible is it to everyone else? How visible is it from the road? How visible is it from other houses?
Put in the parking lot of the funeral home, right?
You won't see it cause there's a, there's a fence, so my yard is kinda, is a little sloped from even from, um, from Mr. Black's. And then there's a fence between Mr. Black's property and the funeral home. I can't even see, I can barely see the roof of the funeral home from my house. So, I mean, there, there's a slope there and then people don't, people pass my house all the time because my house is so secluded back there. Because of all the trees. I mean, people don't even know I live back there, it's, it's a very secluded property.
It's the dilapidated fence you guys mentioned, is that the funeral home fence?
Yeah, it needs repair, it's starting to lean, a few, couple spots are leaning, but you know, a little fixed sooner or later probably, and just, it's just when they put up another fence.
Funeral home fence, correct?
Just in the future, you know, if this fence goes up, doesn't really block the view of that and it's way back in my property and it doesn't matter to me that it's back there, I kinda liked the fact these wanting to put up solar power. And, uh, you know, it's just if we put the fence up there, it's another thing that in the future, it's just gonna, you know, who takes care of it when it starts to fall down, you know, that type of thing.
Well, the homeowner takes care of it.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying. You know, I see other fences that don't last either, so.
And it's, it's for discussing too, is remember, maybe the issue is with the fence, cause if the fence is required to go up, they can't do the solar.
Any reason, again, it doesn't work.
It's really looking at that variance we're having, yeah, it technically is a variance for the fence, but it's trying to decide, do you want to require that, is there some reason not to have a fence there? Which thing would allow them to put the solar in?
Right, I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of a, uh, bad way of looking at it, but that's sort of the big, big picture.
We were talking about before.
Yeah.
What it was doing, I think we decided we wanted to make sure it maintained variance, well, so that we had to discuss it on a case by case basis, right?
Yeah, I think that's what I think, uh, David was mentioning that, based on case. Remember, what you're looking at for these two is, I mean, variance by, or, um, as I mean, applies, you know, a residential district applies to every single house in the residential, it's its own residential in the village. Well, the variance of looking at is, is there something special about this property, something particular about this property that would necessarily be same in a generic standard village residential zone property? Where there'd be something different, specific to this property where you would want to, you know, not follow that particular section of the code. And that, this, that's a question for you to look at though, is to decide, is there something about this property that you could say, yep, because of whatever reason, this property is different where this code should not apply, this code should apply a generally all the other properties that are residential in the village, but for some reason not applied to this property. And that's, that's where you decide this with the, no, that's what they're presenting, obviously, they're saying that it's a larger property. And it's the way the setbacks are, the way the locations are. Um, so that's your decision and your discussion has to be is, does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Well, originally, solar panels were mainly put on people's roofs, right? You didn't see a lot of the ground mounted in residential.
Residential.
And it's, it's, the fence is for screening, right, for the ground mounted, you know, to, to, so you don't have to see the panels. But I think with the, my feeling on the code is that it's limiting people that are in this situation that need to have a higher, a higher panel. And if they're on a wooded lot and the neighbors don't have any issues with the sightlines, you know, the way the code's written, it makes it very difficult for, for people like this to, to, uh, be able to have solar panels and, and if, if it's just an issue of screening and, you know, people not being able to see it and if it's on a lot like this where it's wooded and the neighbors don't have an issue, this is where it's a case by case, but I'm afraid in the future, we're gonna continue with the ground mounted issue, you know, be the way the code's written. Because it's really limiting on the height because of that fence.
I don't know that you will, ground mounts are more expensive. People are more, more likely gonna put them on the roof because it's cheaper to put them on your roof. I would rather have it on my roof if I could. I didn't have to take down so many trees and I had a bigger roof to put it on, I would put it on my roof, but I can't do those two things. Doesn't, it's, it's, doesn't work for, for my property, doesn't work for my house.
The way that wasn't secluded would be putting it on their roof ninety percent of the time anyways, they're not even asking. They would have put it in their backyard where it takes up their whole yard. Uh, from what I've seen.
And that's why you see so many on so many roofs these days, cause it is cheap.
And you're saying this really isn't visible to anybody but your house in particular?
It's supposed to be at all.
Is it visible to your property?
It's so far back, like it's hundreds of, like, at least two hundred feet probably from the house, so it's not something I'm looking at normally, back, back in that corner, there's woods back there, there's trees back there, it would probably be blocked from my line of sight, I'm not sure what, until it goes up, but it's so far away, it's not gonna make a difference with how the, how it is when I sit in the back of the house and look out.
And you're the property owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my wife might even make me put up some kinda like tall fescue grass, cause she does, she's not the biggest proponent of us having one, so even if we do see it from the road, she's already talked about making me put something up in case she can see it. She's like, I don't know if I wanna see that thing, I'm like, okay, if we do, I'll put some tall fescue grass so you can't see it at all from them. I mean, I don't think you're gonna be able to see it, cause you can't see our house. You can't see our pool, you can't see anything, hardly down our driveway unless you know what you're looking at, because people don't know we live there. I mean, do you guys, do, do, you guys are familiar with, obviously, Main Street?
We've had other, other things that have come through the board that are, and the houses are back, you know, all the way down to the bank. And, um, yeah, they're back. I'm not sure what kind of vegetation's there, if it loses, all the leaves are gone in the winter and you can see it. But still, because of solar.
Still can't, cause there's pines along the front there, so they don't lose all their, but.
Yeah, they're tight. Ryan?
You know, if the intent of the code is to provide screening, as you've mentioned, um, this seems to be screened today. I guess my, my only thing is, if a storm, heaven forbid, a storm blows all these trees down and obviously you're trying to keep the trees and not touch them in this whole intent of this taller solar panel. You know, is there something that could be written in, or, or you sell the property and somebody comes in and tears all the trees down? You then will be able to see it from, there's a couple other neighbors that aren't here tonight, probably from their properties to the south. If the intent's to screen it, you know, maybe not a fence, but is, is landscape screening something that could be considered? Even as a condition in the future, if something happened where the screening was, trees are destroyed, you have to come back and put arbor vitus or something to block that southern view. You know, I, I think, again, with the intent of the code being screening, um, maybe it's a substitute instead of fence that could work. Cause you can get materials that are taller, again, I don't think it would ever happen, knock on wood, but, um, you know, maybe that's something that we could consider too. Is the screening element, and since these are taller, um, provided that something were to happen uh, to the existing trees through there, you know, they all got knocked down, they, you know, conditioned to come back and do some plantings and screen that southern line um, along that stretch, you know, I, maybe as a compromise, that we could consider that. Or even, then do that today and even perhaps look at the code at some point too to, to modify that, I don't know, but.
If, if, if you drive past all the road, there's solar farm and screen.
With the fence.
You could. But there's no, there, there's no hiding anything, if you drive down to start a prayer though, where they're putting, putting one in there behind the mire. It's fence, anybody that doesn't know it's a solar farm, they gotta be able to tell them.
Right.
Usually looks a little weird when you start putting fences around solar, to be honest with you, especially if it's solid, it just doesn't look right.
It had to be a kind of obscure fencing.
For residential.
For residential, right?
Yeah, it's all, uh, chain length fences. Okay, well, we're gonna have to, yeah, Ryan, if you wanted to say something about, as a condition, some kind of plantings or something, I mean, that's within our discretion, or if in this particular case, it's good just like it is.
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I understand the, the findings of fact, that one is challenged, first one especially is challenged. So I guess I'm trying to lean on the code in a way that could still try to meet, meet the code, but yet, you know, cause it, it seems to meet the intent of the code today with all the trees, what's there? I guess I'll make that argument of that case at least, and then perhaps if something happened in the future that they have to come back and add landscape screening, since the fence is just an option. Yeah, you know, I don't know what others, yeah, think about something like that, but that's just my thought.
So.
Evan, the staff denied it because they said it wasn't. You said, what was it, number eight, where's the letter A with a hardship?
Yeah, that's when we talk about a hardship on a property. Um, like I said in the report, that's usually a restrictive thing. So, um, either the lot's too small, the lot's laid out weird so that setbacks are harder to meet. Usually when variances are sought, that's the hardship that people are talking about, so. Somebody wants to put up a shed that they one shed on their property and, um, because their property was created in nineteen twenty and it's super small, they wouldn't meet the zoning district standards to the latter if they were to put it up, but that'd be a good situation for a variance because we could say this property is, the lot size is too small and it was made so long ago that it wouldn't fit with the district standards today, ergo, a sh- a variance for a shed would be applicable. In this case, the justification is that the site is less restrictive. So it's more permissible in saying, because this lot is so large and so the, the, um, the house is so far set back and is so secluded from public view that a variance from the standard in the code is justified. In my report, since that's the philo- the philosophy on variances is more restrictive rather than permissive, I have to recommend denial. Whether or not I think this is a good use or I wanna promote solar because the accepted nomenclature is that hardship is more for restrictive situations rather than permissive ones. Um, that's why I found for denial. But again, the, the buck really stops with you guys in how you're interpreting it, um. It's just that those findings of fact would have to be made and again, that A, letter A is the one that's really, um, gonna trip, trip it up, but if, if you wanna say that because um, due to the unique circumstances of the larger lot size than required by the R-one district, the, um, unique circumstance of the property being set back a significant distance from public view and the unique circumstance. And the unique circumstance that the property is heavily wooded and screened from public view. That um, that would constitute a hardship to um, vary from the fence standard. That's what you would, that's what you would add to that A for the findings of fact.
I think it's the hardship because the fence re- his code is so restrictive that they, you wouldn't even be able to do it without, without a variance. That's what I, you know, I think that's the hardship right there myself, because I mean, if you go strictly by the fence code, he can't, he can't even do, do the soli.
But by doing that, don't we open it up then for anybody who wants solar panels to be able to use that as a hardship in any location? What about more so the hardship is the fact that it's so heavily wooded, there's no other way of doing it?
The hardship group, how are you just hiding hardship, it should lead to the land itself, the property?
So it's not the hardship of the?
Yeah, because, because our code, I mean, there, I mean, there is a solution, it's make a, make a short there's only one you can put on your roof, I suppose, to have less power, or do a five foot solar panel. It's not gonna work as well. Like, it's not necessarily, just because the code is written like that, it's, doesn't mean that's the hardship. What you're looking for, as you discussed it, is maybe something with that property itself, that particular piece of property. Something on that property is causing that hardship.
The, the height of the trees.
Out of mature trees.
So I think to Joe's point earlier, is that's what this board does, is we look at these situations. We've done it every single month, there's something usually that is discretionary for us to consider, and so another project comes around that doesn't fit the way this gentleman's project does. Say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give a variance because papers don't like it or whatever. I don't like it.
But you did say you don't mind, uh, you would, you would be agreeable to uh, landscape.
Yeah.
Around, either landscape shield or landscape.
Yeah, and on the front side of it, if I need to, if I need to try to do any kind of blocking from the road, I don't mind that.
I would also be willing to put like an evergreen or something that's right in line of sight between the house and, and that, you know, so that if someone in the future bought my property and, you know, they wouldn't have to look right at the solar panel, there'd be an evergreen there. Like a blue spruce or something like that that would, but I'd have to do that after they install it, so I know what it, it would actually block it or not, you know?
Yeah, we can't use that as what we do here would be just ample to.
Sure, yeah.
This property, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't mind doing anything like that. If there, if there needs to be some sort of a shield between that and the road, I, I don't mind that. There's, there's that one lane between my, between my driveway and, and, and Brian's property that and it's probably about ten feet wide. And that's the only spot I can put something in.
There's a row of trees that runs right down there next to my garage anyway.
Yeah, and there's not mu- there's really not much of a lane that you can see down there any. But I don't, I wouldn't mind putting anything down there. I like being secluded back there, it's ni- it's kinda nice, but.
Evan, Joe, where are we at tonight trying to put something that makes sense? Into that, you know, a thought was to maybe lay it over to have something drawn up, but as George mentioned, and they mentioned there's a timeline for, what, the end of the year for incentives or something, so.
It has to be installed and working by the end of the year of, to get, to get all the incentives from kind of.
Yeah, right now, um, our team at Vanda Walls doing some text amendment revisions, so we're looking to have something for the November meeting, but if not, it would be the December meeting that we would get a, a text amendment. And then that would have to go to um, the village board as well.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a text amendment, I mean, something for landscaping that I think some of the board members would maybe like to see that we could do as a uh, tonight. And I, I, well, yes, when you ask, I'm not sure, Chris. If there's a condition we can put on variance night as far as some kind of landscaping that makes sense. Or are we better just leave it alone for now?
Up to you, I mean, it's a, anything, um.
I know, I'm saying, I started saying, oh, Brian mentioned, I don't know, what's Brian mentioned. Plants or, yeah.
I can say the particular type, but what do you want, I guess, what you can say though is what do you want it to look like? Is it, do you want it to be screened by trees? I mean, do you want, I mean, what is your, I mean, we only have a specific type of plant or the heights, but what do you want it to see is what you can tell us, or make it part of the condition of the variance? Um, I mean, Brian had to comment about, I think, the heights of the trees, or if there was, you know, if there are trees that that was concerned, um.
Yeah, it's really.
Have some screen on it, you would require the screening?
Just maintain vegetative screening perpetuity, somehow wordsmithing something to where not getting specific enough tonight to hinder this, because it sounds like there's almost sufficient screening today, but just to ensure that there's, and the word sufficient is, you gotta almost define that for those, you know, those folks to able to treat it later, deal with it later if need be. I don't think it will be, but um, that's what I've been trying to.
How about a condition of, of they, like, of some slight obscure screening or something to be approved by Evan, the administrator? And since he's here at this meeting, he knows what we're getting at.
Yeah.
What, what we would think is a good idea.
Can you do that?
Yeah, you can put a condition on, um, you can could, put a condition on a variance approval. If, like, if you say that it meets those findings of fact, uh, you could add something that says as a condition of approval, um.
I say, I always make it, we continue to, but I guess you would say, yeah, it has continued to meet those findings, right, that, that hardship, as long as the hardship's in place, which in this case, talking about the tall trees and the hard, the uh, the shading there, the mature trees. I think you said that's the, that's the hardship on this. As long as that hardship stays in place, then the variance is there. Now, if that hardship goes away because the property is completely empty, well, in that case, the hardship's gone, so the reason for the variance is gone at that point. So I mean, I think that would work. Something along those lines, I think is how you could probably do it. I guess what you need to tell us is what you're looking for for screening, if that is something, you know, what does that mean to you? What is the screening requirement? You know, is it, you know, looking to the trees right now, is it, I mean, not visible at all? Because it's gonna be visible somewhat from the road, right? You think it's somewhat, you will see it?
It's not visible from the road, it's what their codes make, so it's not visible from the road, and if you had to put vegetation and do that, that.
It's the neighbors too, though. It's the neighbors to the south, that's really where, the adjacent fencing, that's the requirement, so. That's almost where I would focus on that, but you could make it both. So in the event that the hardship no longer exists. Then we require, I would say, um, you know, some kind of, almost hundred percent vegetative screening be added in those specific areas, you know, where the code otherwise require friends. That's, that's kind of like your point, Joe, the hardship doesn't exist anymore, that, that might be the best way to deal with it, because then it's, which again.
And the variance, the purpose of the variance is gone, if the variance is gone. It's really a variance, they're supposed to generally from the land, not really conditional. But I think looking at, is that hardship gone? Well, and the whole reason you create a variance.
A lot of times often, when I've dealt with clients and hardships, they're mostly financial. In this case, it's clearly not financial, because the way you try to put it on the road, it sounds like them. So that's not issue at all here. It's definitely the trees, purity. I'm trying to fit this on the site.
I mean, so that's the only spot on that site that you can put this?
Yeah, I mean, you can look at some of the pictures, it's, there is no, I've got no empty spot that, that. I could put it closer to the road, but we don't wanna do that.
George, what do you think about landscaping?
Yes, as long as they're be, as long as they're maintained, it'll be covered.
I like the idea of putting landscaping, like, just some grasses or trees right now, to be honest with you, just to make sure that it it does shield it from, you know.
Most customers do. It's the, the, there's some additional from the road, so.
Yeah, so is, is it visible from the road? I, I know there's second floor, will it be visible from the road?
From Main Street?
From Main Street.
It probably will, like, looking down the driveway, straight down the driveway.
No, which is the back of it, do you want, or?
Oh, my, my property.
It's not probably in the very back of it, yeah.
You won't see anything back behind it.
So why don't we do a condition of landscaping to be approved by the administrator? But just leave it at that, and then Evan knows what we're talking about, and he could, sign on that. Something that looks appropriate.
You give him one more suggestion of landscaping be approved to do what?
Some screening?
Screen from, I mean, guys, if I, I'm trying to find out for sure though, like, so we bring, so we bring from the main street, okay? Then how about the neighboring properties?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm talking about where?
Solar.
Streaming from neighboring properties, I mean, is there a way to put the grass, if there's something like that, that was requirement?
Well, it's already screened for most, it's already screened for most.
His property.
It's really a hundred feet away. It's already screened from, from his, it's.
I, I can make sure we all are.
It's gonna be very tough to screen it from all of his property, because that whole, it's, it's gonna be kinda close to his and anywhere.
I mean, from, I would say from where the residence is would be fine, because you just put a tree in that line of sight there and you wouldn't see it. You know, till you're back there looking at it or something.
You, you could put together a plan in the event, kind of an emergency plan, in the event that a storm went through a certain part, you could use a, like a and it could be revised by, I haven't too, some kind of emergency landscape layout along that side. You know, that way, there's a plan in place and on record. Again, heaven forbid a storm comes through there, but um, okay, this happens, here's my backup plan to come plant these specific trees in this location, something like that.
So you're suggesting landscape screening from Main Street in an emergency, if, if.
And.
And.
A backup.
A backup emergency plan for the.
Yes.
The decent property.
Yeah, that would, I don't think that'd be too bad, too horrendous to put together. It can be repaired, I think, Evan.
Like, when you spoke about the, the uh, grasses that your wife had, had mentioned, that was to block it from the view from your house?
From the road.
From the road.
From the road. She really doesn't want it visible from the road, so.
Which that's kind of already been in, in my mind, so it'd be, it'd be here in several person.
I like that idea.
Does this go to the village board?
This will go to village board regardless, yeah. Either with accreditation or about.
Okay, so what do you have for a condition?
Now, right now, there would be motion to approve it, the variance, um, with the hardship being the uh, mature trees of the property. Um, the condition will be as long as that, the condition, or the variance would be approved as, uh, continuing to be approved as long as that uh, hardship continues, the trees, uh, condition of the, uh, would be that the panels need be screened from Main Street by some sort of vegetation, um, screened from the residents by vegetation, and then have there be a backup landscaping plan put in place, approved by the zoning administrator to uh, to address if any of those screens, I suppose, uh, go away in the future, or in the future.
My concern is this future. If the trees get knocked away, who's gonna even know that exists, and who's gonna force it? It's like you do it now or you don't. But I'll go on.
Well, it's just a fallback, because right now they're in place. So it, it probably, gee, it probably come like one of these other neighbors that a storm came through and blew those down, the neighbors probably called the village and say, yeah, I can see this thing now. I didn't think I was gonna see it. I've never seen it before until these trees are gone.
Well, and I'll ask you, if they were gone, then it would no longer meet the hardship.
Yeah, and then the variance, when, yeah, you have to put it back up, or you would have to put screen back up, or you would have to remove the solar panels.
But from a practical standpoint, you're saying how does that can trigger to get fixed?
Yeah, uh, you know, ten, twenty years from now, nobody's gonna know anything about that, and remember, nothing will happen, you know?
So what if it was just as basic as it has had vegetation around it to screen it from sight? With the idea that right now, because of all the mature trees, for most angles, it's already screened, so they would have to put screening in for Main Street, because that would then make it in view. But if the variance, i- if the hardship went away, it's still, it has, it's already in there that they have to put up. They have to change that, whether it becomes now grasses or trees or whatever that may be, you know? I mean, you still have the issue though, that who is gonna say anything, but you always have that issue, right? I mean.
I don't think I've ever heard anybody speak of a hardship going away. I, I guess I was under the impression, once you got something, it was there for ever. I've never heard of anything being taken away or minds being handed out, you know what I'm saying? Although now we have a, um, code enforcement officer, but we have, and people.
I would just say, I would also say too, with the hardship going away, I think it is unusual, yes, but I think it is, this is a kind of unusual hardship, it's built, it's because it's the, the hardship is fact that it's solar can't get to it, light can't get to this, so it is a weird, it's a strange hardship, it absolutely is. Usually it's something that's permanent, right? The hardship is usually a permanent part of the land. In this case, the hardship is part of the land, but it's because of the the location, right? It's the small spot that being put on, and it's that there's trees blocking the, the access, so.
And certainly we don't wanna let wire the, take away these beautiful, mature trees.
Yeah, it's an unusual hardship, but it's because it's solar, right? It's a solar thing versus something where it's physically being built.
Tree all day get knocked down, someone, if they did have a problem, would complain to you, and then you would be able to look at your records saying that, hey, you have to put those up, and at that point, they would have to do it, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, it would be there, but.
You could simplify it on your point, simplify it something, you're just saying it's gotta be, it's great.
It's made, yeah. I had the backup plan, actually.
Right, right, different.
The fact that you had your neighbors, and is there anybody left around there that would complain?
Nobody else can see it, even the, the guy that's kind of behind Brian. I think he's got a garage, a fence there too, right? He's got a fence in a garage that kind of would block his view.
Right.
And I'm not even sure his, he'd be able to see it from where it's all gonna be located, so.
You can screen it from Main Street.
We gotta, gotta set something for it that's understandable.
Yeah, works for them, I would have it true.
Too complicated, they'll could say, well, that don't make sense.
How many letters were now, Joe, to, to Jason? Give or take, you're, to give me a heart.
And where is everybody adjacent to it? I don't know if it ever, I don't know.
But there's not that many.
There's not that many around there, is there? Cause I, I went through the, maybe. Cause I had the satellite picture and I.
There's a, there's probably two or three more that's adjacent to my, the back of my lot, but you can't see anything from back there. There's all grown back there.
So maybe you're.
Everything.
No, although we did hear from, uh, Mr. Black.
Well, we have a lot of, yeah.
Which is, I suppose, a little bit unusual, you know, we should get the positive. Yeah, we did, we did hear, but no, we didn't hear any responses for, against, or from the others.
Alright, so for the landscaping, we need to get a vote going here, um. For the landscaping, do you have something typed out, but I see you're trying to.
I'm gonna be notes on this whole minutes, so. Um, I, I'm not, not changed, I mean, I think it's. Um, I don't, I've not changed, I mean, I think it's. I think it's still streamed from the Main Street, streaming from residences, and then. To variance is conditioned on that hardship being in place. Which is the shade, which is about the churches.
That's the verbiage of what we want the condition to be. What you just said.
Yeah, yeah, general, yes. That's what it will be, oh, right, yeah, so it's.
Sound like something like that way?
Kane, does that?
Yeah.
I hit the points you.
Yeah, because like you said, if you're gonna send it to the board, I know they're probably gonna wanna know what the neighbors say, can get the neighbors here, so.
Yeah.
Joe will be the one that can sell it.
I'm sitting out, it's.
Does the verdict sound good to you, Evan?
That sounds good, that's, yeah, that sounds workable.
Alright, I'd make a motion with those provisions.
And I guess adopting finding a fact, right, yeah. You both close this sometime, and how we usually.
And a doubt.
That will be finding, yeah, the hardship. The change from advent will be that the hardship is based on. When they do it, I get.
And Ropal, please.
Making sure. Uh, you've been watching.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, thanks, bye.
Yeah.
I second.
Probably second by Swanson. See, um, Brad Swanson.
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Dursdak?
Yes.
Blutch?
Yes.
Name?
Yes.
So, the board have a petition.
You could talk, talk to Joe or one more about the next, to the next board meeting.
Yeah, actually, we're going to. Putting this on for the day, for the.
Uh, next week.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Guys, thank you for coming in, some of this stuff is hard.
It is, yeah.
And we're trying to go by what the zoning is set. Yeah, we have some leeway, which you saw that tonight. So nobody's trying to give you a hard time. You know, we all know solar's the way to go when you can. And there's a lot of different opinions. George brought up the solar panel on Perryville Road. And some, I know there was, with the co- on a county level, there was some. Confrontation with that. But yet other people think it's the greatest thing on earth, you know, so.
I think one of the things too, a lot of things, regulations or laws, that the intent of what the law or regulation is. Because in this case, I think the intent of having the fence is to block it from the neighbor's view, right? And it doesn't really block it from my view in this case, but I think vegetation. Does a better job because it's line of sight from. That, so that sounds good to me.
And that's why we need to talk to you guys to know, because we don't have a field trip and go out there and look at it and walk around, which although, sometimes that can be a bad idea.
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yes, but. Yeah, so. Good luck.
And we want everything to be pleasing to the eye, right, and so I think that some circumstances like this circumstance, that's gonna be much more appealing. Um, from a visual perspective than a fifteen foot fence.
Some people don't like fences either.
Yeah.
Right.
So that doesn't necessarily calm the the problem.
Is is there a presentation that they would make at the board level too?
Um, they can, I mean, are you guys available to, or I mean, are you able to be at the board, being on a fifteen? And by. I mean, it's up to you, I guess up to you, we'll, we'll, we'll have, have these other minutes from this, we'll, we'll get the things around and we'll have the discussions.
It's all available.
Or maybe. It may be very interesting, this question, the same part, I mean, the board could discuss it too, and it's. Sort of interesting, it'll be same place, Evan, six, three, um, um, next meeting.
It may be helpful to have some photos too, perhaps, some of these different kinds of sites.
Yeah. That's pretty, I know it's.
I'll get, I'll get some photos like down the, not looking down the driveway.
We have.
Speaking also, it's what you're talking about, kinda, so I might be able to find some of those too, give those, get those out.
It's just, it's good photos.
And the fact that it's residential makes it even more. Pretty cool to get it right. You know, commercial stuff is. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do they, you guys have now done this, do they?
This, they, this is our recommendation to approve, so it's easier for the board to approve it, so you can always overturn this, so and they can deny it as well, but it makes it just because it's board approved it, there's one extra step, they would have to use by it, they have to sort of find the opposite findings, so.
Alright, alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, so are you here any, all business, let me think what? I'll say one quick note, I know that Evan mentioned that you are working on or they are working on, and all of us are working on, is trying to get some updates for the something. So if there's anything specific in addition to things you've talked about previously that you. Kind of look at, and we've got some ideas, we've had a thing to be running to, as we've been doing the administration of it. I know Evan's got some uh suggestions that he's running to based on trying to administer the code. Um, but if there's anything that you. Have seen or see that you think might be some worth us looking at and making some changes to. That's our goal, is trying to have November, have some more of those discussions and try to, we've got a a block of them, we're gonna try to bring through, just some more cleanup, some are. Just missing things, some are things in time compounds, but so.
Do you want to hear that now?
Uh. We can, otherwise, if you want to share us information about it.
I already have a couple of mine, because I don't.
If you have one, it's just you want us to look at. Choose me there.
Well, let me throw it out, um.
Jimmy.
A limit at residential on how many things could be permanently parked or parked in somebody's drive. I was by a house with two boats that looked like they were there for the winter and a camper. They were. So it wasn't too offensive, but I I just started thinking about the neighbors, and I know I wouldn't appreciate that, so maybe. Whatever you guys think, but maybe a limit of one thing sitting in somebody's drive. I never know if I should look at the screen or look at the camera. Um.
What happens if somebody doesn't have a garage?
I, it would still hold, I think.
So you're talking about like recreational vehicles?
Well, that's what they amount to, um, I don't want to see somebody's drive or whatever become a storage. Place for, and. Do they need to belong to the homeowner, what if they start storing their sister's or brother's boat along with theirs in their drive, is that fair to everybody?
We're talking about boats, RVs and trailers of some sort.
Not necessarily automobiles, but those need to be licensed and insured. As far as I know, anyhow, so. They can be more. Anything else, guys, on that line? You can always email.
If you have one, you, you want to come look at me, well, just just email.
Yeah, you can always email. Joe or Evan with some ideas. What are you guys looking at specifically?
Right now, right now, we're looking at the uh, the solar. And then. I had a couple other ones here.
No, I'm trying to point it out to you.
So yeah, solar, and then we're. Today, today Jackie and I looked at the accessory building and accessory structure code to kind of clean that up a little bit, because there's some. Things that aren't defined or defined well, um, so we're just cleaning that up a little bit, not making any big policy changes or. Proposals or anything, just making it flow a little bit better, um. And we have. EV chargers, that's kind of further down the line, we haven't given that a ton of thought. But that was kind of brought about by. Um, a permit that. Came through, but we, we, since we didn't regulate it, it wasn't really in our purview. So creating a section for that for EV chargers. And how they relate to gas stations and having them be defined and then having a setback forum and. Saying where they can go, where they can't go, um. Allowing larger accessory building structures in commercial and industrial districts. That was kind of the Forest City Gear one tonight, that kind of brought that on a little bit, thinking about that. Because if you. If we wouldn't have had. Um, reasoning to put that warehouse or storage building into that light industrial. Use. And they would have been on the same lot, they wouldn't have had areas to go for. Like storage of their equipment. Um, and then the last one was creating a special use for. What Joe and I are calling retail sales outbuilding, uh. There's a, there's a re- uh, property owner in the villa, or a tenant at a. Commercial site in the village that would like to do some sort of kind of temporary. Um, pop-up shop kind of thing with like a. Uh, renovated storage container to rent out bikes. Like bicycles for the bike trail. Um, so we don't really have anything in the zoning code right now that would allow that, so creating a special use. For something like that and putting standards on it, design standards and requirements for the size. That's kind of what I got kind of listed down as coming down the pipeline, but.
For temporary pop-up?
Yeah, kind of temporary, yeah.
Seasonal or temporary, uh, it's. Something that, I mean, you've seen other places, we've seen, I mean, you've probably seen before too at other cities, but it'd be for like a, in this case, like a bike rental, like for a bike path, right, maybe it is not, maybe it's seasonal, but it'd be like in a parking area, so being a parking lot, a bigger. You know, multi parking or multi uh location parking. Um, allowing that sort of temporary building. But it's figured out, and that's the big whole discussion with this board is figuring out. You know, how loose, how strict, how many, the types of locations they are.
Big one in Vegas, those container.
You know, yeah, well, the one in Vegas, and then, you know, maybe not quite as big as those, but even the ones in, um, Los Park, or, yeah, or, yeah, Los Park, right, the ones over by.
Well, we do have those, yeah, mhm.
Uh, maybe not like that size of the.
Where?
Containers. Uh, where the.
Like Leos?
Leos is, it's by Sportscore, by Sports.
Yeah.
They're building containers there, it wouldn't necessarily be for those that size, where it's more of a permanent structure.
Better name for it than containers, right, because you think of containers, you think of.
Yeah. Something different. So this would be like a smaller version of those, like the half size of those, um. But temporary type structure, but also. You know, maybe a little nicer looking, but it, we allow it right now, and it's. Kind of a lot of codes don't allow it, because it's sort of a newer thing people are doing and where people are doing things, but. We've had the request, and so we're like, yeah, I've got something to look at at least, and maybe. Test out or do a limited trial on.
It's like a mobile pop-up.
Yeah, sort of, yeah.
Right, because you could relocate it.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Container parks, container parks, I think.
The one on the riverside, yeah.
Yeah, I think our initial one would be maybe just a single container, and we're trying to figure out, I guess, with this special be, it'll be bigger, not, you know, what size parking lot, what size area, you know, obviously not. You know, just a small commercial parking lot, and okay, here's a container, you're selling it out, or. But. It's something we're looking at. It's interesting, it's interesting, I think.
Well, public comment, there's nobody here, so let's do a juror. I'll take a second.